Uh, Luna Rose.
Okay, is Dr. Trujillo here?
I don't see Dr. Trujillo, no. Or Mr. Ross, or yes, I do see Mr. Ross.
Okay, well, if you can go ahead and do a roll call.
Okay. Ms. Grigalva?
Here.
Dr. Grivosha?
Here.
Ms. Luna Rose? No, not yet. Ms. Shaw?
Here.
Ms. Counsel?
Here. Great, well, thank you, everybody, for being here. And we are going to start off our evening with a wonderful student from, well, he, it says on my form that he's at Mansfield, but he told me that he is at, at Holiday. So, um, let me see, it touches for, I'll be reading the land, okay. So do we have Mr. Anthony Escalante Jr. here?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you for being here. And Anthony Escalante is a seventh grader at Mansfield Magnet Middle School. Anthony is Tawana Autumn, and forgive me if I pronounce this wrong. I'm gonna attempt it, though, Kanesh Satakeh, or Mohawk, Native American. Anthony serves as the historian for Tribal Images Youth Council and will be interviewing Kimberly Willis Holt, the author of the book, The Ambassador to No, uh, The Ambassador of Nowhere, Texas, at the 2021 Tucson Festival of Books. So Anthony, if you could, go ahead and read our land acknowledgement statement, we would appreciate that.
On behalf of the governing board of the Tucson Unified School District, I, Anthony, acknowledge that the schools, buildings, and facilities of the Tucson Unified School District reside on the ancestral homeland of the Tawana Autumn Nation and the federally recognized tribal land of the Basco Yaki Tribe.
Awesome, and thank you, Anthony, and how do you like Mansfield?
It's, it's great. I like it.
Are you excited to potentially get back into the class, or are you gonna be staying remote this year?
Uh, I decided to stay remote and just finish the seventh grade online.
Nice, well, thank you for being here and for reading that important statement to our entire community.
You're very welcome.
All right, bye-bye. And next, we have Andre Emerson. He is a second grader at Holiday. Andre loves school and music. Andre loves to build things with Legos, 3D models, and STEM sets. He also loves the Black Panther. Well, those are all awesome things, and are you here, Andre?
Yes, I am.
And how are you doing this year at Holiday?
I'm doing great.
Good. Well, thanks for being here, and whenever you're ready, we can pull up the flag and you can lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, God, and invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wonderful, and how about you, Andre? Are you, uh, do you know if you're gonna be going back into the classroom or if you're gonna be staying remote for this year?
I'm staying remote this year.
Nice, well, thanks for being here tonight and have a good rest of your evening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye-bye. Okay. Um, do we have Dr. Trujillo? Oh, I see Dr. Trujillo right there. Hello, Dr. Trujillo. Could you begin the evening with our first agenda item?
Yes, President Counsel, members of the governing board, Tucson Unified Community, welcome to our study session that's designed to provide the governing board and the public the very latest update on our ongoing planning for the upcoming March 23 reopening for in-person learning. So first, let's just take a look at where we're at today, and I think everybody can see the screen share. Just a quick glance around the noon time hour to see where our district lands so far with instructional preferences. Still waiting on around 32% of the district's families to respond, so we still, we're getting there. When we released for the rodeo break, we were pretty close to 50% of the district that needed to respond. So in the last four days, we've seen a great, great uptick in families responding and making their choice. Still close to 13,300 that need to respond. Head-to-head, when you look at the portion of the student body that wants remote versus the portion of the student body that wants hybrid, we've got remote edging out families that want hybrid right now at 34 to 32%. We will be keeping an eye on this data daily at this point as we meet with our reentry team every morning. The current trends right now don't support class sizes being at consensus at every school across the district. I do wanna caution the public and our board that we will have outliers on either end of the spectrum, okay? We're going to have a few schools that will buck this trend with having a larger population of students wanting to be on campus, probably exceeding 50%. We'll also buck the trend the other way and probably have a larger-than-50% portion of a student body wanting to remain remote. But those are outlying cases at this particular moment in time. The bulk of the district is kind of matching up to a 50-50 campus split in terms of if it's elementary, wanting the five-day-a-week experience, or just five full days of full-on remote, or if it's high school and middle school, wanting the four-half-days or either just being fully remote. What's next? This is a big week for us planning-wise. We're kicking off a second round of discussions with TEA and ELY leadership, and at the top of the list is coming to an agreement on class-size recommendations. We're gonna start those talks tomorrow. We recognize that we need to position our teachers in our campuses in a place where they're gonna be able to effectively implement CDC-recommended physical distancing requirements everywhere on the campus, to the extent possible. And that starts with having an operationally viable, recommended class-size cap that is safe for everybody. Now, once class-size recommendations are made and our ELY leaders and our TAEA leaders and our district team agrees on what that is, our principals are also going to need flexibility to meet the needs of their respective facility. Those of us that have spent a lot of time on campuses know that classrooms come in all sizes and shapes. So our principals are gonna need that flexibility to go either way. For example, if I'm at school A and I'm using my multipurpose room as a classroom space, and let's say that the association leaders and the district come to an agreement that it's going to be 17 as a recommended class-size cap. Well, my multipurpose room might do 22, and kids still comfortably being six or seven feet apart, we need to be able to have the principal have the authority and the autonomy and the flexibility to be able to make that call. Same on the other end of the spectrum. If we arrive at a recommended class size that might be 17, we might have a principal that might be utilizing a room that's recommended for English language learners or exceptional education that has smaller spatial capability and might only be able to fit 12 with kids comfortably six to seven feet apart. That principal's going to need that flexibility to be able to make that call. So class sizes are going to be top-of-mind discussions now that we have our data starting to come in, now that we have in excess of 70% of the student body weighing in. We have strong enough data points now to be able to have structured conversations around recommended class-size recommendations for elementary, middle, and high schools. We're also going to-
Dr. Trujillo, can I, can I ask a quick question that I think relates a lot to this? If we have 70%, I'm assuming that a large majority of the people that have not responded yet are people that maybe don't have easy access to technology or not familiar with parent view. I myself had to actually call the school and let them know my preference. But I'm concerned with, with the 30% that has not responded potentially being heavy on one way or the other, especially if it is in class. What, what, what are we gonna do in that sort of situation?
So we're, if you do not contact us and you don't respond, similar to what I stated at the last board meeting, we're not changing your level of service. You revert to remote. So we're taking the stance that if you want the level of service you're being provided by TUSD changed, modified, or interrupted, you're telling us, right? So right now, everybody's in remote learning, so everybody that's going through this process and filling out parent view, they're noting they want in-person, so we're gonna change. We're gonna bring them for in-person. If we don't hear from you and you're not responding to our text messages, our emails, our phone calls, we're gonna leave you alone. We're gonna leave you in remote as you are until you tell us not to. So we're defaulting to remote learning.
Okay, so we have sent text messages. I know we've sent emails, but we've done text messages. Have we done any phone calls?
Yes.
Okay, was that central, or is that school?
Each site team is aggressively calling, and it's showing. We have several campuses that are now reaching 100% of their families responding. So I think that it's tremendous progress. Yes, yes, go ahead.
Does the district have an expectation for accountability and outreach?
We have an, yes, every single family needs to be, and once the schools finish, we will start. We are, to be honest with you, getting a lot of families saying they're gonna wait to see if their teacher changes, okay? Or we're getting a lot of families saying, yes, they're gonna fill it out, and then they're just waiting for whatever reason. So it, it, it's not necessarily that we're not getting a hold of a lot of people. There are families that we're just not getting a hold of, absolutely. But the bulk of the outstanding is just kind of waiting to hear, is my teacher's, is my kid's schedule going to change? And we'll talk a little bit about that as I progress and what the timeline is. The other really large and consequential conversation with TEA and ELY is working on a transparent process for handling class-size overages. There are going to be situations where the amount of students that want to be inside of a classroom for in-person learning is gonna overwhelm the teacher's opportunity to keep kids six feet apart. We've put together a really transparent process that we're gonna be rolling out publicly next week, but we want a chance to brief our leadership from TEA and ELY that's actually gonna prioritize students that are academically most in need to be in the room for in-person learning. Exceptional education students with disabilities, English language learners, refugee students, students that are in the bottom 20% of performance at their grade level with math and reading will also be prioritized. Foster students, students in foster care, McKinney-Bentham homeless students. That will be the recommended framework that we're looking at. So for, for example, if we have a situation at school A where the recommended class size is 17 or 18, let's say it's 17, and we're gonna be proposing to TEA and ELY that the teacher have choice, that if a teacher's comfortable signing off on a student to bring the student into their room, we wanna give them the opportunity to do that. But let's say that the teacher doesn't feel comfortable doing that, and the teacher says, this is what we can handle, this is what we're gonna be doing for six feet of, of physical distancing. And let's say that 20 students are scheduled in that room. With this equity framework, we're gonna be able to move in and make a fair and consistent decision using the same set of criteria from school to school to school to say that in that situation, ELD students, any refugee students, any students with disabilities, any students performing in the bottom 20% of their grade level, according to benchmark or previous ASY Merit data, they stay in there for in-person learning. And if we have to do, if we do have to move and ask three additional students to remain in online, that they're not students that are academically most in need. So our Equity and Diversity Division created this framework when we were actually gonna, thought we were gonna start school in November. And we did a public presentation, but it's been a while. So we're gonna bring it back, and the good thing is, is that we've, we've created it for this particular situation, and it's gonna be able to allow principals to apply a consistent criteria from school to school to school without families feeling like they're being treated differently. There are gonna be a lot of campuses where we're not gonna need to use this framework, that are 50-50 splits, and probably every family that asks for in-person learning will probably be able to get it, but there's also gonna be campuses where we're gonna have to apply the framework to be able to keep classroom sizes at a safe level where we can maintain that physical distance. We're also going to be finalizing some additional options that are gonna increase flexibility and autonomy for campus principals to respond to individual campus needs, individual employee situations, scenarios, and requests. This is not the time for an overarching district administration that's gonna try to micromanage each and every situation and scenario that might occur across 89 very different campuses with different facilities, different teaching staffs, different-sized classrooms, different sizes of in-person learning populations on their campuses. This is the time to empower principals to make those site-level decisions for their local campuses. Where we will provide structure are on the large-scale issues that our schools need consistency on. Class-size recommendations, framework for classroom overages that I just talked about. They need us to have a standard approach to how we're going to address additional students in a classroom. They need us to provide structure with regard to recommendations for reentry plans. So those are the big items that we're gonna pitch in and really provide that structure, but we wanna leave the individual campuses and school principals the autonomy and the authority to work with their individual employees for campus-specific situations, to respond to individual parental requests. We're gonna provide the structure of a set criteria for how to assign remote assignments. So those really large-scale decisions that need to be consistent, there's only really three of them, we're gonna put that together. But we wanna really make sure that principals have that autonomy when they get down to the campus level. I'd like to throw it over to Maricela at this point to kind of take us deeper into the Memorandums of Understanding and what they're going to allow in terms of flexibility for principals, options for teachers and campuses to be able to teach simultaneously. I gave the community and our boards a very high-level overview last week at the governing board meeting, but now I'm gonna throw it over to Maricela, who'll take us a little bit deeper into the detail. Ms. Mesa?
Thank you, Dr. Trujillo, President Counsel, governing board members. I'm here today to discuss the two Memorandums of Understanding that we've entered into with TEA and ELY. We've been working together to try to navigate this process, and in doing so, we were able to memorialize some of our understandings. I did provide some slides. I don't know if they're available, but I can just continue. The first memorandum of understanding that we agreed to was the Remote Teaching Assignment, MOU. Richard Sanchez is going to be speaking about it in a little bit, more in-depth, but we did memorialize this as an agreement, and it's a standard protocol for a site to use in the event a teacher is requesting a remote teaching assignment. This process has been vetted by, by TEA and ELY through our legal department, and it really, really allows for an equitable process for remote teaching assignments to be assigned and there to be an equitable process in it. This remote teaching assignment process applies to K12, and what's important to know with everything that we're gonna discuss, and I know Dr. Trujillo touched on it, is that regardless, the site administrator may work with the in-person staff to allow for flexibility in their assignment and their duty expectations to look at the individual needs. One thing that we know is there's not a one-size-fits-all approach to everything. When we all got together, there were many fact scenarios being brought up. What about this situation with this grade, with this type of household situation or instruction? So we just really needed to have broad language that provided flexibility to apply to the different fact scenarios. And next, and this will be through the close of this year, none of this is a permanent change to any standing documents. It's, it's really for this fourth quarter. Next slide, please. Thank you. This is the simultaneous teaching MOU. This applies to the K5 and the three, K8, C. Rose, Drachman, and McCorkle. What we do have in the MOU is we set it up so the TEA representative and the site administrator work with one another to develop the survey, to send, to certify the results of the survey, and also to, for communication to go out to the families. The reason we put in the MOU that the communication will come from the site administrator and the TE rep, TEA representative is because we wanted the communication to get out to the families as soon as possible. If your site is a simultaneous teaching site, we want that site administrator to not wait for the communication to go through the district and for all the sites to do their thing. As soon as one site had decided what they were gonna do, they can get the communication out to their staff, and we thought that was really important. As we know, people are making their decisions, parents are making their decisions, and some of this may factor into their decision-making. The gist of the plan is that if one of these sites were to agree with an 80% approval, that the site would become 100% simultaneous site. Now, there is a huge caveat to this because we know, you might say, well, if it's not 100% approval, what about the other 20%? What's important to know here is we have the same language about flexibility and assignment and working with teachers, as is in the other MOU. Further, sites can work with different grade levels. I know we've heard from sites that have said, hey, we aren't 100% simultaneous teaching, but our first grade and third grade opted to do this. So that's a perfect example of a situation where maybe it wasn't 100% of the site choosing 100% simultaneous, but where this provision is helping some staff that want it. And maybe they're wanting it because they believe they're gonna keep more of their students this way. Or it might be because it may seem like, I know, keep everyone together an efficient way to, to provide instruction. Everyone has, has different benefits from each of the scenarios. That's why it's not a one-size-fits-all. And again, this is not a permanent change. This is just through the end of this school year. And I believe-
I have a question, Ms. Counsel.
All right, Dr. Ravi, go ahead.
With the flexibility, Maricela, you're saying that like, the goal is, you know, 80% for the whole school, and the whole school to have the same thing, but TUSD is giving site-level flexibility. If like, a certain grade level wanna do something, and the teachers are all on board, principals on board, will give the, the, the school the flexibility to do what they think is best for their students and their teachers?
Exactly. It has already been proven to be helpful at some sites where maybe they all were not all on board, but different site bands can, grade bands can utilize this form of instruction.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Shaw.
I, I do like, you know, how if, if this were to be, then students wouldn't lose their teachers, but I wonder, I mean, how, how effective can a teacher really be if they're teaching both in-person and remote students? It seems like they're all gonna suffer in the end.
Ms. Shaw, I, I can't speak on behalf of the teacher. Here would probably be a teacher's, if they feel that this is something that they wanna do, it might be because they feel they can excel at it, and it might be the best option for them. But the, the goal of this is to allow for that flexibility if, if that is what is believed to be the best route.
And so, so would the students that are learning in person be learning on a device? I'm just wondering how they're gonna juggle remote and, and in-person students at the same time, if they're gonna just kind of be in the classroom with sort of how similar, how they're teaching remotely?
I'll, I'll go ahead and jump in here, Maricela. So I've been on several forums now, most recently just before the meeting and then Thursday. It's, a board member, Shaw, it's like 50-50. We've got a lot of teachers, just most recently in the forums, excited about doing this, I wanna do this, I've got it down, I have a system. But then also, you have a lot of teachers that say, you know what? It's a little overwhelming, I'm not there yet, I prefer to be one or the other. And that's a beautiful thing about the language that allows for that flexibility between even grade levels. The second part of the question, when you look at when kids come back to school, that Chromebook is still gonna be, whether you're in-person or whether you're remote, the primary instructional resource in the classroom. That's what the teacher's gonna be using most, even when kids are in-person. They're gonna be using that Chromebook a lot, especially for our instructional software like iXL, Imagine Learning, a lot of the instructional software that we're using now that kids can use at home. Also, simultaneous learning is gonna be made possible by the document, the video document cameras that are going to allow teachers to simulcast and broadcast what's going on in their classroom to the students from home, change the camera angles, adjust them, have camera angles hit different areas of the classroom. And we're gonna have Mr. Young talk a little bit more about that later on in the study session and what that looks like. But we have a lot of teachers, particularly at Drachman. Drachman was one of the first campuses that they hit a supermajority, I think almost 90%, if not 100, wanted to do the simultaneous teaching, and they have a system, they have it down, they're excited to do it. We also have other campuses like Whitmore. That's a perfect example of a campus that did not hit the supermajority, but they have unanimous consent at kindergarten, first, second, and I think it's, I wanna say, fourth grade, that they are gonna do simultaneous teaching and the other grades are not. So even inside of a school, you're getting that element of choice.
Thank you, Dr. Trujillo, yeah, and I commend all the teachers who are embarking on that endeavor, and I, I really hope that they are successful, and I wish them well.
Okay, Maricela, let's keep it rolling. All right, and with that, in our MOU, we also made it clear that we're not done talking and that we are still actively working together. There are so many issues coming up with regard to the reentry, and we just want everyone to know that we are, the work goes on, we are doing it. And with regards to the MOUs, they were prompted by principals saying their teachers wanted it or a TA hearing about it through their teachers. So, you know, our goal is just to, to create a framework to work from. And that's all I have on the MOUs, and I, is there a question?
A question, Ms. Counsel?
Yes, Dr. Ravi.
I don't see dates on this. When, when is, when is all this happening, all these decisions being made? Will, will parents have this information before the final deadline to, for those waiting for the in-person? the in-person?
I'll, I'll go ahead and respond. So we set a deadline of tomorrow, that we will have a full list of schools, and if not school-wide, grade levels, where the simultaneous teaching option has been activated, and parents will be notified whether or not a schedule change is needed. When we met with principals last week to brief them on the MOU, we assigned them this Wednesday by the end of the day. If necessary, we're going to extend the window that parents have to make a decision, realizing that the information is coming on, what would be Wednesday, I'm sorry, March 3rd, not March 2nd. We will extend the window as necessary so that parents can make an informed choice.
So schools will have their final makeup in terms of simultaneous versus non-simultaneous, which teacher will be remote, which teacher will be in-person by Wednesday, and that will be communicated out immediately that evening or next day to the parents?
Yes, we want communication happening on Wednesday.
Okay.
I have a question, Ms. Counts.
Yes, Ms. Luna Rose.
So, and maybe just because I'm a, I'm a wonky nerd, but can, is it possible for the board to, I'd like to see what the MOU says. I know you just abbreviated it, but I'd like, kind of like to see the policy, the actual wording.
Absolutely. We sent a copy to the board office, so we'll make sure. I don't know if it's posted on the agenda, but we will make sure it's visible for all.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that.
And with that, I'd like to bring on Richard Sanchez. Richard is going to walk through just the general criteria that principals are going to be utilizing when considering remote assignments. As you saw with the data, there's going to be a significant portion of the district that wants remote only, and not every campus is going to be simultaneous teaching. So we wanted a fair and equitable framework that could be used from school to school to school when principals, who it will be their final call, take into consideration who gets to be assigned remote teaching assignments. Mr. Sanchez?
Good evening, Board President Counts, governing board members, Dr. Trujillo. Thank you for allowing me to be here to represent a number of stakeholders who I've worked alongside regarding the remote teaching protocol and the selection for the fourth quarter remote teaching assignment. I'm going to screen share some documents, so give me one second. President Counts, do you see that screen share on the PowerPoint?
I do, I do.
Thank you so much. So I want to begin by basically thanking a group of amazing educators, of district leaders, principals that range from K-12, and of course, our Eli and TEA leadership for working collaboratively on this process in trying to create a framework that we felt would be transparent, easy to understand, and an easy process that the teacher could fill out. And then lastly, feedback being given by the principal regarding their selection. So our scope of work really centers around these five different key areas. The first one is that we wanted to create a framework that was applicable to K-12. We felt that was necessary, so that way there'd be transparency across all grade level sites regarding using the exact same framework. Number two, that it was easy to understand that the principal and that the teacher could easily understand the framework, could easily understand how to apply for the request, and then to get the feedback regarding whether they were going to be granted the position. That it absolutely had to center around the employee need, and in this particular case around teachers. We had heard from our governing board earlier in the year about the, really the need to really take in consideration an employee's health, their age, and also maybe some things that are happening with their, within their own household. And that employee need needed to be considered when it comes to a remote teaching assignment. We felt it was extremely important that there be some guided principal autonomy, that the framework allowed for the conversation to occur between the teacher and the principal regarding the request, and that there would be some flexibility built in for the principal when deciding who was going to receive the assignment. And then last but not least, that no matter how many requests were made, that the principal would network with every single individual teacher who made the request and have a conversation around the request, and also around whether they were going to grant the request or have to deny the request based on certain metrics. So our framework consists of the following six major criterias. First and foremost, that it was going to be a volunteer system, that teachers who were seeking to work remotely could easily make that known by communicating with the principal, and thus, after communicating with the principal their request, that the principal would be providing them a request form. That we would utilize existing language, and this was agreed upon by both Eli and TEA. We have a right of assignment, it's called assignments in our consensus agreement 6.4, which says that the principal does have a right of assignment to reschedule a teacher to a particular grade level, a particular area of qualification when it comes to their teaching assignment. But in using the right of assignment clause, that there had to be a rubric that the principal had to follow, that was going to be standardized all throughout each grade level and each school. The, the rubric would not change, and it had to center around the, the fifth category there. It had to be centered around health, medical need or issues, age, and then lastly, other employee needs. We know that there are things going on at home that don't necessarily affect the employee themselves directly regarding their health, their medical condition, or their age, but it does affect them when it comes to possibly supervision of a loved member who is living with them, supervision of a child who is continuing to stay remote. And so we really want to make sure that we took that into consideration as well. So what we created was basically a three-step system. We created a protocol that the teachers would follow regarding making their request. And then we created an actual request form that was going to, that is standardized and will be utilized throughout the district. And then lastly, a rubric scoring system. So I'm going to stop, share this, and I will take you actually into those three artifacts, and I will share those with you. So what you should see now is basically a, a document that we put together regarding sort of the steps that an administrator will take regarding the, the request form needed. And so it just basically takes them through four steps here. The first step is just to notify the faculty and staff that there are remote teaching assignments available at the school level, and that if a teacher is interested in a remote teaching assignment, then that they would need to notify the principal via, you know, email, text, you can have a conversation with your principal, but basically making them know that, that you as a teacher are interested in a remote teaching assignment. And once that is, once the principal facilitates that whole group conversation, then it moves into really step two. And step two is basically where the principal will be providing a remote teaching request form. We ask that that request form is returned back to the principal within two school days. And the reason is because we have to start making decisions in order to start educating our parents about those remote teaching assignments. And basically, that request form would then be utilized in a scoring rubric. Number three basically states that we would use the consensus language that is in Article 6.4 regarding making sure that the teacher is highly qualified in that specific area, that they're appropriately certified, and that it's based on student enrollment and registration. And then lastly, step four is once again, that each site principal will notify each candidate granting or denying their, their teaching assignment. At the bottom, we just have the consensus language specifically outlined for the principals to utilize regarding that right of assignment approach. Once again, it's based on the student needs, on enrollment and registration, it's based on class size, staff ratios, and of course, based on the teacher's preference, education, and experience. So that is sort of the protocol. We shared that with principals two weeks ago. We walked them through this exact same process. We shared the documents with them, and we asked them to start facilitating those steps, which then takes us into the actual request form. And this is the request form that every site received. It actually was, you see a generic title here that says remote teaching assignment request form. We did create one specifically for every single site, so you could have Hughes or Line Weaver entitled here, that we ensured having that, so that way we go directly to the teachers who made the request. And basically, what it takes you through is through 10 questions that we're asking of the teacher, centered around their health, centered around their age, and centered around an employee need that might be happening at home. This basically asks them to fill out this form and submit it, and then the data from this form will be sent back to the principal to utilize for their scoring rubric. We are asking the, the, the teacher to certify that this information is truthful and accurate. We are not asking them to provide evidence of any of these questions other than stating yes or no and certifying that that is truthful and accurate in their response. Lastly, we did make it very clear to the teacher that it would be confidential, the information provided, that it would only be seen by the principal, and that if the teacher is indeed granted the remote teaching assignment, that their teaching assignment may change, that they may have to teach a different grade level, or they may have to teach a combo class based on the data that we are receiving from, from parents. And so I will just scroll down to show you the questions that were asked. The first question is just about them typing in their name regarding the information that they're providing. And then we went through just asking about, do they have an ADA-approved accommodation already that is impacting them from teaching in-person? We asked them about their age because it's very, very important, especially in the pandemic, as we know that this pandemic affects everyone. And so that's very, very important that, that their age is, is noted here. And then we also know because of the vaccine that there are teachers who want to get the vaccine, but maybe are unable to do so because of a medical issue, i.e. they're, they're pregnant, they have, they're immunocompromised, maybe they have a severe allergic reaction, and that was important for us to note that. We also know that there may be some teachers who receive the vaccine or have not received the vaccine that have other existing health conditions, high blood pressure, they're diabetic, they're asthmatic. These are conversations that have come up in the past with principals, and we really want to make sure that we noted that for the employee. We also know that there may be an employee due to religious or faith-based reasons who is choosing not to get the vaccine as well. And then really seven through 10, talk about maybe things that are going on at home that we really should take into consideration. Maybe there's a child who is immunocompromised, and thus, the child has to be a remote learner, and therefore, there's some childcare issues for that employee, and the importance of us knowing that regarding the remote teaching assignment. Maybe they live with somebody who is health compromised, or they care for somebody who is health compromised, maybe an older parent that they're, that they're caring for. And then number nine and 10 is really important for us to know because it talks about childcare. We know that there are students who are deciding to stay remote. We heard about two of them today in our opening. And so maybe there's some childcare issues for those teachers who need to come back, and we should take that into consideration as well. And so based on this form, they would just hit the submit button, and the principal will, will receive that data, which then takes us into step three, which is our rubric. So what we've done is provide all site administrators this rubric. It's a protected worksheet, and it basically allows them to score every employee that submits the form. This scoring really helps drive the decision for the principal on a K-12 consistent basis about who is the best eligible employee for the remote teaching assignment based on health, age, and other employee needs. And so basically, they fill this out, so they put in the teacher's name here in yellow, the date that was submitted. It's based on a 100-point scale. And then to your far left there, you should see the scores, which are four currently noted. In green was the weighted criteria that we worked with leadership, the district leadership, principals, Eli and TEA regarding a weighted rubric. So health is considered 50% of the weighted rubric, age 30, and other employee need is 20. The reason we came up with this is that 80% of the rubric is solely focused on the employee's request, with us also taking into consideration other things that are happening. And so as you look in the rubric, they, they mimic basically all of the questions that were asked on the form, and as that form is submitted, the administrator will then score, will then score that particular employee. So I could just take you through it quickly here, and if I typed in Jane Doe, and we say that Jane submitted it today, March 1, 2021. And then based on how Jane submitted that form, we would score them. So if Jane said she didn't have an ADA-approved to work remotely, but she's just unable to get the vaccine out of religious reasons, then she would score one on the rubric, and the principal would put push a one here, and if you'll notice, the box moves over into one. Jane's age we'll say is 55 years of age, so she would receive a two. However, Jane does have a child who is immunocompromised and is a remote learner, and she would score a four there. And this would tell the principal where Jane scored on the rubric. As if you can see at the bottom, we have it outlined for a number of employees who want to make the request, and the principal would use this to score all subsequent employees, and then be able to determine what is the best decision for the remote teaching assignment. Also taking into consideration, once again, those other right of assignment kind of language when it comes to the qualifications, when it comes to possibly the grade level they teach, the amount of students who have made the request for in-person versus remote. So they take that all into consideration to finally make that decision. But we find that using this process is a very equitable process to utilize that have been agreed upon by both associations, and that can be standardized throughout the K-12 grade levels. So with that, I will open it up to any questions.
Mr. Sanchez, I have a question. Have we received any feedback from teachers regarding kids that are younger than kindergarten? Just in my personal life, I know that there's a, a lot of teachers right now that are unable to find childcare for infants, toddlers, or even preschoolers. Has that been an issue? Have people brought that up, and if so, how have we addressed that?
So we did, that did come up in our committee work regarding teachers that, you know, did have some childcare issues that were younger than kindergarten. The committee decided that they wanted to focus on the K-12 students because we knew that they were students who could possibly come to school but also need to stay back. They also felt that in the traditional model of how we've done school in the past, that there were other avenues for childcare that could be utilized for those particular employees if need be regarding our pre-K models, regarding our early childhood learning centers, and that they could utilize those resources if necessary.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, board members? Ms. Shaw?
Thank you, Ms. Counts. Mr. Sanchez, if you'll go back to the rubric real quick, if you can. I'm, I'm a- I'm a little concerned about the fact that on the last rung of the rubric, under other employee needs, the health of a teacher's home, like in regards to a child or a family member who is immunocompromised, is scored so low on the rubric. So even if they, you know, click on those, it's only weighted at 20%, and that seems like a significant thing that should be taken more into account, like, and put on the health line, you know what I mean? So can you speak more to that, or why the health of a family member is scored at such a low level?
Sure. So we did debate during our time. We met numerous times regarding this rubric and regarding the weighted criteria. We felt in the end that because we really wanted to focus on the employee themselves and their need regarding their health and their age, as the board has stated in the past at the beginning of the year, the importance of making sure that we're honoring our employees and their health and their age, that we felt that these percentages reflected that request. Not to say that the other employee needs regarding things that are going on at home weren't important. We really wanted to make sure that was a part of the rubric as it is here. But we just really felt, the committee felt, centered around the employee and their need directly.
Okay, I don't see any other questions.
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
And I'm not sure if you can answer this, Mr. Sanchez, maybe Dr. Trujillo can. But I have a question about the ADA status process. I know there's a lot of teachers and staff out there who, you know, are immunocompromised, but haven't received the ADA status. And so can you comment on, like, how you review the ADA requests? And, you know, why some teachers who, you know, have serious health conditions aren't being given those designations?
That's a great question, and this is right up General Counsel Rob Ross's area. He has spent a lot of time on the ADA issue, and he's worked hard to put together what I think is a really, really great process. If I can call on you, Mr. Ross?
And can we pull up the rubric as Mr. Ross is speaking? I do think it's listed under a Level 3 or something. I'd like to see where that would lie on the rubric.
Thank you, Board President Counts and members of the board. Ms. Shaw, good question on the ADA, and we have to remember that that's a completely separate process that is governed by federal law. And there's a couple of steps to it. Number one is whether someone has a disability that meets the qualifications that the law provides for, under the Americans with Disabilities Act. And we have a good number of employees who do meet that qualification, some did not, who've made the application. That's the first step. You have to kind of get in the door with a qualifying disability. The second step is whether or not there is a reasonable accommodation available. And that's where it gets really, really, you know, where the rubber meets the road. That gets a little bit difficult when you have thousands of kids coming on a campus. You can't give everybody a remote assignment. And that's where we were back in the fall. This opportunity kind of gives, opens it up a little bit, and we're taking into consideration whether or not someone has qualified for Americans with Disabilities Act accommodation. But we also have to remember that we are having kids on campus, and they need supervision. So where we were at in the fall is that, you know, we were having all, you know, a lot of students returning. We had to have supervision for them, and it wouldn't be reasonable to give everyone who requested a remote assignment a remote assignment. I think we're in better shape now, and I'm glad it's part of this rubric. But there may be some who qualify, but because the program of the district requires supervision of students, not everybody who has an ADA accommodation will get one. Like I said, it's a process that's, interactive process that's governed under law, and it's not really something that we negotiate or shouldn't be negotiating in something like this. But we do have a good process for it. We've had it for years. There's an online form that's filled out. The ADA office, which is mostly in risk management, I do some of it myself, especially when there was a high volume in the fall. And we go through the process in reviewing medical records that are submitted by the employee, and also discuss with the employee and the teacher and the administration what can be provided. And we've got a bunch of accommodations that are, that may not be a remote assignment, but that we provide for additional protections or flexibility in schedules and such for some employees to accommodate whatever their disability might be.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. So we have an ADA officer that works with the district?
The risk manager, Nicole Lowry, is the designated ADA coordinator for the district.
I have a question, Ms. Counts.
Yes, Ms. Luna Rose.
So, Mr. Ross, when you're talking about reasonable accommodations, I'm a B-side's remote. In a normal year, how many ADA requests does the district get?
I'm not, I don't know what the exact numbers are, but probably less than 30, 30 to 50 maybe, and I know that we had hundreds, hundreds that were processed in the summer and fall, and more are coming in recently as well.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, Ms. Shaw, if you don't mind.
No, go ahead.
Okay, so with reasonable accommodations under this rubric, if a teacher feels that they are eligible, but the risk management deems them ineligible, what is the process going to be for that?
So I designated Mari Sella as the appeals officer. So Mari Sella Mesa, our director for employee relations, was also an attorney. She then puts her appeals hat on and reviews the case again. So there is a mechanism to appeal for the employees that want a second look at their case.
Okay, and does this apply to not, to all staff, teachers, and staff?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, board members?
I have one more question, Ms. Counts. So TEA approved all of the percentages on this rubric? And each category?
Yes, this is an agreed-upon memorandum of understanding, but the parties reached consensus.
And so this has gone out already to teachers?
Richard, we've done principals, correct, at this point?
So what we've done, Ms. Shaw, is we have presented this to our principals. We presented the protocols, the PowerPoint, the protocols, and the rubric. And so now our principals are going through the process of providing any teachers who are making the request, the request form that you saw. That request form is then being submitted to the principal, and the principal will start scoring that request form via the rubric that you just saw as well. We hope that then shortly thereafter, the principal will start making their selection for who will receive the remote teaching assignment.
Okay, Dr. Trujillo?
Yes, thank you for that, Richard, and I want to thank our teams from Eli and TEA. They were outstanding, meeting several times to hash all those out. Last week, I gave you a brief report on where we were at with PPE and the 50,000 N95 masks, the 10,000 face shields, and of course, the current status of the installation of hands-free bottled water stations. Now, we've got some really, really good news about our efforts to ensure indoor air quality and some ask-fores. I've had the opportunity to interact with, right now, close to about 1,500 employees and parents over the last two forums. We had a great showing on Wednesday night, almost 1,000 viewers on Facebook, and then the Zoom call. We did close to another 500 about an hour before this meeting on our Zoom call and our Facebook Live. There were some ask-fores that we're very proudly going to pursue. But one of the bigger items that we're now excited to pursue, and it's been an ask-for even long before the forums, was in the area of indoor air quality. And now with our recent second round of CARES Act funding, and specifically, CARES Act money now being earmarked for air quality assurances, now we're going to be able to purchase the high-efficiency particulate air purifiers known as HEPA. And HEPA air purifiers have been proven effective in not eliminating, but significantly limiting the spread of harmful particles in the air, which of course includes COVID-19. We're going to set about purchasing HEPA air purifying systems for cafeterias, multipurpose rooms and libraries, the large common areas on our campuses that see the greatest amount of student activity. Given what may happen with the $1.9 trillion aid package currently making its way through Congress, that currently has an additional $139 billion earmarked for schools across the nation for reopening needs. If we see additional funding coming our way, we could be in a great position to possibly take a look at providing each classroom in our schools with its own HEPA air purifier. But for now, we feel very, very strongly that a strong first step is to be able to outfit the common areas that see the largest amount of students. Secondly, I want to be recommending that with our second round of CARES Act money, that we go ahead and retrofit the district with minimum efficiency reporting valve-rated, or otherwise known as MERV-rated, Level 13 filters. What we know about MERV-rated filters at Level 13, like the HEPA air purifiers, they're effective, they're more effective at keeping harmful particles from spreading than the lesser-quality MERV-8-rated filters. Now, they're not bulletproof. Neither a HEPA air purifier or a MERV-rated Level 13 filter will fully stop the spread of COVID-19, but they can reduce the spread by capturing more particles. There's a significant portion of the district that utilizes older HVAC systems that are still on the MERV-8 system. To be able to retrofit the remainder of the district, it's going to run us around $938,000. It'll be one of my earliest cost expenditure requests, when we look at our $76 million reward, to immediately embark on retrofitting the entire district to make sure that it's MERV-13 compatible in every single building and every single school. That's a huge step in addressing a lot of the indoor air quality that we see. And then lastly, we heard in our forums a couple of different times some requests for Plexiglas desk shields from several teachers that will feel more comfortable. We are going to go ahead and purchase those desk shields so that they're available upon request. And then also, we heard the need for instructional camera systems for those teachers that want to work remotely. I'm going to ask Blaine in a moment to talk about the instructional camera system capability that we're going to be able to deploy immediately. But before that, I want to welcome John Mir. John is going to talk a little bit more briefly about what a project is to retrofit the district so that we're MERV-13 compatible and a potential timeline to do that, now that we feel really, really good about our funding situation. Mr. Mir?
Thank you very much, Dr. Trujillo, President Counts, board members. I've got some really great news. We were off to the races after the town hall on Wednesday, so I'm very happy to report. We have 10,000 face shields that have been delivered. We have 50,000 N95 masks that we are anticipating a delivery date of Wednesday, March 3. As soon as we receive those, we'll be looking to equitably deliver these to all of the sites in the district. Dr. Trujillo, we also were committed, you're committed, to getting hand sanitizing stations in every classroom in our district. We're moving forward with that. We will be able to receive these from the vendor after we talk to them before school starts. So we've got enough on hand currently to outfit every one of our classrooms with the eight-ounce that we have. But we're looking to, we put in our front offices the hand sanitizing stations and in our nurse's office, and we talked to a vendor, we'll be getting the dispensers for free so that when every student teacher goes into the classroom, they can get hand sanitizing. So we're excited about that. Our commitment to the air purifying stations that you talked about, again, working with contracted vendors, we're able to get a big supply that I feel are going to accommodate what you have said about our commons area, and then look later on possibly getting them for all of our classrooms. Currently, we have 100 water bottle filling stations. We have 43 that are installed. We will have at least one at every one of our sites before the start of school. We have 57 more on hand to install. We're also looking to, as Dr. Trujillo said, ordering 300 more so that, like, a bigger school, Tucson High, some of our middle schools, that we can strategically put more of those water bottle filling stations throughout our schools. We have currently the disinfecting spraying systems that we purchased. 42 have been delivered to the sites, and we'll be sure they have all of those delivered to our sites way before school starts. The MERV-13 specifically, Dr. Trujillo, we have put a stop to ordering the MERV-8s, and we will be retrofitting almost immediately, as soon as we receive them, MERV-13s throughout our school district where it's applicable. And again, in my presentation in October, I did share with the board that we do have MERV-13s in place, but our commitment to get them to other air conditioning systems, we'll be doing that. And again, we're already starting to purchase those. One of the other projects that I'm excited to talk about was, as you guys recall, before COVID, Dr. Trujillo committed $700,000 in retrocommissioning. Retrocommissioning basically involves coil cleaning, air handling units, disinfecting, system flushing, air dampeners and actuators, belts and coolies. We're currently working on a second list, because it would qualify as or $2, these, more of these retrocommissioning projects would qualify. So we're going to work with our current vendors to get a price on what that would look like to continue to commit to retrocommissioning our aging units. With the Plexidex desk shields, operations is going to order kind of a bulk sampling of what we feel that'll get us started. And then the intent is, if schools have, you know, a certain round table or a certain configuration that might not fit, we're going to develop, or have developed, a market basket, basically, that they could acquire at the school site, some of the one-offs, if you will. Working with X Ed, obviously, if there's a custom that we need to make, that we'll definitely get that out to our with that, if there are any questions, I would be happy to answer them. Yes, Ms. Shaw?
Go ahead, Ms. Shaw.
Thank you. Question, what percentage of schools will have the HEPA and MERV systems in place by the March 24th opening day?
Our intent, and what I've been told by the vendor, is that we can receive these before the school starts. So our intent is to have them at every one of our schools in the area that Dr. Trujillo identified. So we should receive those before school starts.
Okay, and it doesn't take too long to install them, or?
No, ma'am. It's a plug-in unit, so we can pretty much plug and play.
Okay, and then, you said that's just for the multipurpose rooms, cafeterias, libraries, for the HEPA filter, and then the MERV ones would be for the classroom, or?
Yes, ma'am. That's, yeah, that's exactly what it is.
Okay, thank you. Also, is there any, are you all looking to maybe retrofit the classrooms for those classrooms that have windows that have been sealed shut classrooms that have windows that have been sealed shut to possibly, you know, make, make them open again?
Um, yes, Board Member Shaw, there's, I, I realized that there was a presentation recently sent out from New York Times about the windows open, doors open. Within Arizona, just to kind of back up a little bit from the presentation I did in October, Arizona, we introduce outside air, okay? And that's through the air conditioning unit. And the reason that I stress that, and again, I will look at, at what New York is doing. They're, they're saying that they could introduce a window through a door with a box fan and a HEPA filter. I need to know what New York's doing because Arizona, I believe, is a little bit different. The reason that I stress the windows, and we'll look at every one of the applications, Board Member Shaw, by introducing outside air that isn't going through the filter, I think that's why we call it air conditioning. It is a closed loop. Okay? But, but I would love the opportunity to get back and talk to some of the folks, Pima County Health, we've been involved with a lot of the indoor air qualities. So what New York sent out for the Times, I just need to do a little bit of research. As I presented before, the intent is to filter, especially now with the MERV 13 filters that we're putting in place to have that closed loop where we're circulating and then adding the bonus of the HEPA purification system.
No, I'm tired of the deceitful shit. I'm not going to deal with that. Okay?
Okay. Sorry. I have a question. I'm sorry, Michelle, are you?
I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Muir, quick question. So, Ms. Shaw was referring to the, the schools or the classrooms that don't, windows won't open, but I'm assuming in a, that the HEPA and the MERV, I guess these would be MERV in the classrooms, like at Recon High School at the bottom, they have basement classrooms that have no windows. I'm assuming that this would, would work in those classrooms and, and is there a way to, it's probably sci-fi, but is there a way to measure how much output is coming out, you know, or input, you know, what's being circulated?
That, that's a great question and we are going to be working with some of our engineers to answer those questions. There's a lot of information and we can look at that one model that you're looking at so that we can be able to report back to you guys with that kind of detail of how much air is placed on the hour. I can share with you that we have been running our systems a lot more than we typically would through our EFCS program, which is, is a central program so that we can keep those running. Typically, we would shut our units down earlier, but our commitment to run during the entire spring break to make sure that we're, we're getting as much air through that filtration system as possible.
I have a question. If Ms. Rose is finished?
Yeah, go ahead.
With the HEPA filter, that's going to help with kind of, you know, whatever particulates are in the air left behind, that will help from the direct person-to-person spread. Dr. Treheal, will you be talking about kind of like lunchtime, meal times and other times when people need to be unmasked and how that's going to work and what the plan is? That going to come later in the presentation?
Yes. And you can also access each school's lunch plan. Each school website has their reentry plan where lunches and recess and departure times are spelled out and how those are going to be handled. But I, yeah, I'm going to, under mitigation efforts, be talking a little bit about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Muir, I just want to say thank you. I feel that your department, your team has really gone above and beyond in safety measures, more so than any other district that I've researched in Southern Arizona. And I, I know it's a lot of work and you guys have been working so hard around the clock and just thank you so much.
President Counts, I do appreciate that and I will share with my team. They, we, we are blessed. We are truly blessed.
Great. Thank you.
And
Thank you.
Thank you, President Counts. And not to be outdone as our under outstanding performer out of ITS, that's Mr. Blaine Young, who can talk a little bit about how we are going to equip our teachers that select the simultaneous teaching option and the particular equipment that they'll be using, at least for the short term. Mr. Young?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Treheal, and good evening, Board President, members of the Board. The Board may recall back in, in the fall, we've made multiple technology investments with our CARES dollars. One of those included a document camera called an Aver U50. That camera has come in to our district. That product is available for us to be able to deploy that district wide. And that camera would offer a mechanism for the teachers to teach local and still have the students that are remote to see what's going on in the classroom. We have been working with our instructional technology team to put and training together to, to use the document camera in various ways. So we feel really good about this solution, not only for this current use case, but what's going to come out of that is a capability that we can use going, going forward for lots of remote instruction needs. So that, that's, it's something that we know how to do. We've had really good testing of using it and we're, we're confident that it, that it will work effectively for, for this use. And be glad to take any questions you have.
Yes, Michelle.
Mr. Young, how many of those document cameras do we have? Will they be available to all teachers who might need them?
Thank you, thank you, Michelle. Yes, we, this is a product that's been in the district a while. Our teacher, one of the good things about this is our teachers are familiar with the product and many of them have already used it. But when we understood that we would have a, a need for this to be ubiquitous or available across the district, we purchased enough so that each teacher in our district could have one if they so choose, because it, it's got in-class applications as well. So it, it, you know, it's a great instructional resource just for teaching in the classroom, but it just has this added capability.
Oh, quick question. Mr. Young, I'm assuming that the security measures on that will be to par, just like that, so nobody's bombing or, or interrupting this?
Yeah. So the way that, the way that this actually works, I mean, we're all talking over Zoom now, and this becomes an additional camera that participates from the teacher's laptop in the Zoom session. So, so they have both cameras, the, the camera that we're all using right now out of our laptop device, but in addition, they have this additional camera that they can use to present images or let the students see, the, the students in the classroom. They'll have the different scenarios made available to them in ways that they could use it. But yes, it will be secure because it'd be part of the existing Zoom connection.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
If, so when I visited Sunnyside a couple of months ago, they were just setting up cameras where they had, like the teacher could wear a little necklace that was motion sensitive and then the camera would follow them. And I know specifically for some of our dance classes, drama, those kind of things, that would be really great because the teacher in those environments isn't, I mean, it would be better that they're not stationary. So I'm wondering if you've had a chance to look at some of those, because I know results have been mixed and I'm hoping that the quality has improved in some of those devices because it was a little hit and miss.
Yeah, Ms. Grabah, if I could, I, I wanted, you just made an important point that I want to go back and add a detail. So one of the things that the teachers would use in the model that I just described is that they would have a Bluetooth wireless microphone where they don't have to be tethered to their PC. They can, they can move around in the classroom, but still have the students participating remotely using this additional camera. What you're describing is probably a unit that's called a swivel. We, we had explored those back when we made this purchase. The market was being overrun with demand. So the manufacturer, we talked to multiple suppliers, but the actual manufacturer was struggling to keep up with demand and they were, they were months behind. We're working with our purchasing department now because those units are be, being used on a small scale in our Exed environment today. So we, we also know how to configure and set those up. We just got to ensure that we can get a product where that product is needed. But what I've described as readily available would work for our simultaneous teaching model. And certainly, I, the swivel unit where cases like where you've described, we're going to be working through with purchasing to get that where, where it's needed.
Okay. Because I think that that would be really helpful. I, I don't know that we could outfit every class, but some of those really large, you know, auditorium style kind of for, for what I described, I think would be really helpful. And then, you know, ideally, I do think that this is not going to be a situation that's going to resolve itself by the beginning of next school year. I still think that we're going to have a percentage of students, I don't know if it'll be 50/50, but it'll be a larger percentage, I think, that are going to opt to stay remote until perhaps children can be vaccinated. And so if that's the case, then these, these things that we're providing, I think, are going to be something that we can continue to sustain. As I've mentioned in other meetings, I hope that we don't lose this opportunity to look to really reimagine what our education system looks like and take advantage of all of these teachers that have put in hundreds of hours of work into creating this online system. And if we can figure out a way to, when a child is suspended from school, that they can still participate in education remotely when they're ill and can't come in or for whatever variety of reason they can't come on a campus, this would be so great. I mean, you know, I was talking to Dr. Treheal about it before because it's something that I've brought up, I don't even know how many times, but being able to figure out night classes where we're, we don't have to physically worry about sharing the campus anymore, this can be something that we figure out, like a really different model. I think that would be outstanding and something that other districts are not offering right now that we could. So a lot of these, this extra technology, the access to it, I think is going to be really critical to moving in that direction.
I, I'm sorry, what was I going to say? It just allows us to be innovative and, and be the, the leaders that this district can be. So thank you for your work, Dr., Mr. Young.
Yeah. And if I could just add one closing comment back to what Board Member Grabah was saying. What we have learned as a school district across the span of this year and, and the gains that we've made are absolutely gains that we need to continue to capitalize on. And certainly extending the classroom and using this virtual model is, is absolutely one of them. And we're certainly going to continue to add to our capabilities there and make sure that we, we make that available for instruction.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Thank you so much.
So before we bring on Pima County Health, I just kind of want to reiterate, and I picked Line Weaver because I know this is Dr. Graboy Shaw's child's school. For members of the public or anybody watching, all of our schools on their main page, they posted their reentry plan that will review everything you need to know about major campus procedures. So when I take a look at what Ms. Walz put together, very well organized PowerPoint that she's going to review with her staff when they come back, but it talks about arrival, it'll tell you drop off procedures, arrivals by walking, what the learning environment looks like, transitions and recess, lunch procedures. So you can go to the, to the website of your local school and you can see what your particular school is doing in these areas. Overall, when you take a look from a 30,000 foot level, what TUSD continues to do with overall mitigation efforts? And what we're going to hear from Pima County Health Department right now is it really is all about layered mitigation. And I just kind of want to remind the community, I do know we heard from several concerned called to the audience, although it's getting better now that we're interacting with people directly in forums, it seems like people are now, oh yeah, I remember that presentation or yeah, I know I've looked at my school's website, but I don't think it's, I don't think it can hurt to over communicate. Look, we're still mandating masks for all of our students and staff. We're still going to utilize Zoom, even though we're back in in person, we're still going to utilize Zoom to meet as much as possible to reduce the amount of in-person meetings. We will be physically and socially distancing to the maximum extent that we can in every single building, facility and campus. When I say to the maximum extent that we can, are kids going to be kids and escape us every once in a while and huddle up on a playground if we're going to have to run up and separate them? Sure. Right? It's, it's, this is a human business. This is a kid business. So there's going to have to be some grace. Are kids going to steal off to the bathroom together and our, and our monitor's going to have to chase them down because they go in three or four at a time and we're going to have to go clear that bathroom out? Yes. So I'm asking for just grace and understanding that we're working with young people and young people don't always follow the rules. But we're going to be swift with our expectations and the structures we have to make sure that those physical and social distancing requirements are enforced. As you can see in the Line Weaver example, recesses and lunches have been modified. We've established health zones. Health zones on all of our campuses are safe spaces for employees or students presenting with possible symptoms to go immediately into isolation and to get checked by our health services office. Quarantine and reporting practices remain in effect. They have not changed. We have quarantining procedures that require staff and students to be out for at least seven to 10 days pending a positive test result. We've been doing that since the start of the pandemic. And we're going to continue to handle outbreaks and positive cases at the school-wide level, at the grade level or classroom closures. And one thing that I want to make very, very clear to parents that are opting to come back for in-person learning, if there is a case positive in your child's class or if the teacher is case positive, that particular classroom is going to fold back into remote for the period of the quarantine. That's a standard part of our procedure. If we have a school-wide outbreak, like we saw earlier on in some schools and some districts around Pima County, then with the school goes down for a quarantine situation, then the entire campus will revoke, will revert to remote learning. So there's going to be that flexibility as we experience case positive situations. And lastly, we've got a survey that's gone out. Leslie will round out tonight's session with an update on the almost 2,000 respondents that we've received to the survey on whether or not employees have received the vaccine or made an appointment. Pretty positive stuff. We, we took a look at it around midday. 90% of our almost 2,000 respondents have been able to indicate that they've either received the vaccine partially, fully, or they've made an appointment. Very, very good news for us. So just a quick overview of our continuing layered mitigation efforts. In advance of Mr. Brian Eller, who I've asked to join us to give us an update here on the Pima County Health Department's latest guidance on opening schools, on vaccine distribution here in the county and just a snapshot of where we, where we are standing right now on the dashboard. Mr. Eller?
Yes, can you hear me okay? Can you hear me? Okay, great. Thank you, Dr. Treheal, and thank you, Honorable Board. I'm going to go ahead and see if I can do a share screen here. Okay? Just let me know if this comes through.
Yep, you're good.
All right. Great. Thank you. I won't be able to do this in a traditional slideshow setting, so you'll just have to bear with me as we navigate through the sidebar. So for the overview, that's, this is specific to Tucson Unified in some senses, you'll see where that data actually comes in from, from the county overall. The overview for this presentation will cover a general dashboard update, will cover a vaccine update, the PCHD position on reopening, layered mitigation efforts, as Dr. Treheal cited earlier, an update on the inside class and school transmission rates, or what we refer to as outbreaks as the main measure for that metric, and then recommended quarantine guidance, just as a reiteration of what that actually means. The dashboard overview, I'm sure you all are familiar with the ADHS schools dashboard. There will be a PowerPoint sent out to Dr. Treheal and to HR over at TUSD, where you'll find links at the bottom of some of these graphics that can take you to these, these are resources if you want to research them on your own. I'm showing this graph in particular because we do have a weekly Friday meeting with ADHS and all the other local health departments as it pertains to schools mitigation guidance. And one of the things that's been consistently reemphasized in that is that school districts' local educational authorities should consult with their local health departments for guidance. So as you can see in the metrics over here, specific to Pima County, there has been a decline in cases over the past seven weeks, if not more. Same with our percent positivity rates and our hospital visits for COVID-like illness in the region. As you can recall, though, Pima County has actually nine benchmarks, which we use to preliminarily set out what those recommendations were, either for businesses or for schools. And those benchmarks include the three that the state has for case data, which are the disease data, which are the, the two consecutive weeks of declining cases. The reason why this isn't in The reason why this isn't in yellow is because we're not below the 100 per 100,000 threshold at this point in time. We'll need to be there for two weeks before it gets there. A percent positivity is probably going to be moving to yellow in the next week or two. So look for that, uh, that metric to be adjusted. And we are in the yellow for COVID-19-like illness, uh, which is, which is good news. We're, we're, we're feeling like we're moving in a positive direction. Regardless of that, though, it's really important again to go back to this concept of layered mitigation. It is so critical to continue doing what is working, and I'll talk more about that in a little bit. In terms of the hospital data, we're seeing that, uh, uh, lab testing and availability and utilization is, we've met that criteria. We're doing a really great job for testing overall. There's the adequate hospital bed capacity to care for two times the current COVID cases statewide. Um, and we have sufficient personal protective equipment for emergency responders and in terms of that metric being in progress. The one that I'm, that we're really excited about is Public Health Department, which is the public health data, which are the three following benchmarks at the bottom here, is timely case investigation. We're now at a point where we can, in 48 hours, get to any positive tested case or any close contacts of that positive case. Um, so that, that metric is now at a criteria met button, which is, is a really good thing for us. The faster we can get in touch with, contact with cases and the faster we can get people into quarantine and isolation, the better we can contain the spread of COVID overall. So, uh, this is important for you all as schools to consider as well, and I'll show you reasons for why that is, uh, shortly here. Looking at COVID-specific data for Pima County, uh, this graphic is from our website. It's, uh, cases by day. Again, you can see this decline since December, steady downhill trend. Uh, we've had a total of 109,137 cases in Pima County. That data was pulled today from our RGIS system. Uh, we've had a total of 2,212 deaths in Pima County. And again, that data was pulled directly from our RGIS system. Going on to vaccinations, at this point in time, we, we know that we've vaccinated with one, their first dose, 75 to 80% of K through 12 educators. That's through Banner, that's through TMC, and that's through the state site. We also know that on average, any given population, there's about 15 to 20% who deny receiving the vaccine for various reasons. I heard that cited earlier in a study that was conducted internally with your district. That's consistent with law enforcement, with healthcare, uh, with pretty much any focused population. There's going to be that, that, that general group. Um, and that'll follow the standard norm of a bell curve too. You have your 10 outline percentages on either end, which usually adds up to a 20%. So mathematically, that makes sense. Um, for Pima County Health Department registration for vaccines, we've had a total of 4,868 TUSD K through 12 educators, uh, bus drivers, custodial staff, transportation, um, in general, who have gone through the Pima County system to register and to actually receive their vaccination through the TMC, uh, group. There are additional ones that have gone through Banner. Uh, we don't have a specific method to pull that data out yet by school district. We know that there's been approximately 11,000 K through 12 educators that have gone through the Banner system to get their vaccine. Um, we've also, through, uh, through the U of A pod, we've had three very specific TUSD outreach events where we work directly with your HR department to get large numbers of TUSD staff down to the U of A pod to get their vaccines. It was a very short notice, uh, very quick thing, and, and I definitely give a huge high five to, to Leslie over in HR for making that happen, as well as Nikki and, um, uh, in, uh, your, uh, Health Services. In terms of our reopening guidance, uh, there's a really great, um, Swiss cheese graphic, which has been used to describe layered mitigation as a whole, because any one of these layers has holes in it. And it's the stacking of those layers together that makes mitigation successful in terms of preventing, uh, transmission of COVID-19. I used a metaphor in my earlier weekly webinar series that I do with schools where I, I refer to it almost like as a pasta las teca, right? You need your tortillas at the bottom, you need the chicken, you need the media crema, you need the, uh, uh, the cheese and you need the, the corn and the onions. And, um, I, I, that came up because my, my suegra made it for me the night before and I was like, oh, that's what it is, right? So in order to have that successful mitigation to take place, you have to have all those things layered in together in order for it to work appropriately. Um, uh, the, the county overall as a whole uh, shows that the layered mitigation that's really successful is the universal and correct use of masks. The physical distancing, which can be incorporated into cohorting or potting, as well as a strategy. Handwashing and respiratory etiquette, cleaning and maintaining healthy facilities. Um, I heard, uh, uh, the, uh, the discussion on ventilation strategies earlier, which is really big thumbs up on that. I'm glad that's going through. Uh, contact tracing with quarantine and isolation, we work really well with your, with your, uh, School Health Services, with Nikki and Penny over there. They do a great job on getting reports over to us promptly. And then the last piece of testing for indication of monitoring. I do want to raise some awareness around the availability of testing specifically for TUSD staff. There's a really unique opportunity for any TUSD staff member to get tested immediately at any, any Pima County facility. And to connect with your HR and with your Health Services to make sure that teachers are utilizing that surface or that service frequently through the ASU Pilot Program. Is, it's a really great resource that, that we definitely think can be utilized, uh, at a higher rate. Um, we also are working with your district at getting Binax Now Kids, which are our 15-minute rapid tests out to test, uh, symptomatic students and teachers as, as an additional screening tool that you can do onsite um, to, to refer people into isolation, uh, immediately in case of presentation of symptoms. And getting a little bit more into the weeds of the layered mitigation strategy, we did do a, a release and a, a video back in, in February, uh, early February, where we stated that, um, you know, as, as a health department, we are seeing national and local trends that emphasize classrooms being a safe space, that the, the, the role of mitigation and how that can be applied contextually within a classroom can ensure a fairly high level of safety for students and for, for, uh, 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 teachers in those classrooms. Overall, our student-to-student and student-teacher to trans, uh, student-to-teacher transmission within Pima County is fairly low. We've had three cases since August where there's been student-to-teacher transmission. And we continue to back home through that data to be absolutely sure that that's the case. Um, for, uh, student-to-student transmission and teacher-to-teacher transmission, we qualify that by, by measuring outbreaks. To date, we've had 59 outbreaks, and I'll get into that on the next slide, and I'll talk a little bit more about that within all schools, not just within, within TUSD. Uh, we know that by far, a vast majority of COVID infections are taking place within social settings and with home settings. And that's over 95% of cases within schools, that that's, that's where that's happening. Uh, skip down to the next slide here, and I'll go into some specific, uh, details around cases. Uh, so from August to current date as of this morning, we've had 3,678 total cases, that's staff and students throughout all Pima County schools, public, private, charter, all of the above. Um, we've had 645 total from TUSD in total. Uh, and that's since August. We know that since February, uh, of this last February, approximately 20% of cases have been staff cases. So 80% are making up students, which makes sense since we're starting to see a return to school. We've seen again an observable trend in the past, downward in the past seven weeks. Um, I mentioned that 59 total outbreaks number. I'm going to define outbreaks, uh, just to make more sense of that. An outbreak is defined as any single transmission within a classroom setting, person to person. So that means that it's epidemiologically linked. So that means it's not a brother or sister. It's not a family that's getting together over the weekend. It's not friends who had a party over the weekend, but that the source of that transmission can be traced back to the school side of the classroom. And again, that total number of outbreaks since August across all schools in Pima County is 59. Now, those outbreaks don't just consist of two cases, the vast majority of them do, but they can be anywhere from two to 28 cases that result from an outbreak. That's very rare. We see a large number of cases within a given outbreak. Um, that happened within a sports-related scenario, uh, that, that larger number. But most of these outbreaks are contained rather promptly because the positive cases identified quickly. Any close contacts are identified quickly, and quarantine and isolation guidance is usually prompted right thereafter. They're connected to the Health Department, and those families are following that quarantine or isolation guidance almost immediately after that, that, um, that positive case is identified. While those students or while those staff members are in quarantine, they develop symptoms or they develop a positive test, which is where some of those outbreaks come into play. Uh, in the last 24 days, and I do want to bring this to your all the attention because it is something that's a little bit concerning for us. We've seen eight basketball games, which have resulted in a quarantine of 16 total teams. There's been two confirmed outbreaks in that already. So again, indoor sports is something that the county is not recommending at this point in time. Um, we do, we, we think it's safe to go ahead with baseball, softball, ball, track and field, um, outdoor sports. Uh, we've seen very, uh, we haven't seen any person-to-person transmission contextually within those sports at this point in time. The outdoor, uh, environment contributes to that. Also, the levels of mitigation that can be implemented within those sports as well. Last slide, I'm going to do a quick pull down here. I was, uh, want to give an overview of the quarantine guidance. Uh, let me do this instead. Sorry. Okay. So there is a, uh, a guidance for what we call reduced quarantine. Okay. And what that means is that effectively, if you're following mitigation efforts and you've, you're isolating effectively, um, and you're not developing any symptoms, that on what you're seeing is the last exposure day here. So let's say that I was in a classroom or I was out on a playground with student X, and I was within six feet. And, and that we were, uh, you know, sharing high fives and maybe we gave a hug or something, and I found out the next day that that, that individual was a positive case. That now moves me into a close contact category, which means that I've been exposed. So that last day of exposure is day zero. On day five, if I don't develop any symptoms, I can take a test at any one of the Pima County facilities or, or any of the facilities that you would have access to. And if those test results come back negative, I can return back on day eight. This is particularly helpful for your staff by, and, and making sure that staffing shortages, we know have been a, a serious issue, which have increased staff, uh, stress overall. Um, so this is a, this is just another helpful tool that's recommended by the CDC as an early return. Again, specifying that there are no symptoms within that time period. And just a reminder for what understanding close contact actually looks like. Uh, and I, I gotta give a shout out to our U of A partner, uh, a, a student who developed this graphic for us, Jessica Martinez. Um, we're gonna try to hire her as soon as she's done, uh, but she did a great job with a lot of our graphics. It's within six feet. Um, for a cumulative 15 minutes or more within a 24-hour period with or without a mask. We are finding more and more evidence that's supporting that masking with fidelity actually does reduce the occurrence of transmission. Again, that's that layered mitigation approach, that even though there's some Swiss cheese, the more layers you put in, the more effective you're going to be at reducing transmission. Um, and then there's some other, uh, uh, criteria that go into this close contact identification as well. So at this point in time, that concludes the, uh, PowerPoint that I've put together for you all. Um, Dr. Trujillo, thank you for the opportunity, and, uh, if you'd like me to stick around for questions, I'd be more than welcome to do that.
Board members, any questions?
Thank you, Brian. That was very, very informative.
Got a question, um, Ms. Counts.
Yes.
Brian, thank you so much for that information. Um, I just was kind of wondering, so that 59 total outbreaks. Um, so the 3,700 cases in Pima County, 600 from TUSD, those weren't transmitted from schools. Those are just cases of, of people associated with those institutions, and the 59 outbreaks are the only ones that are associated with the schools that we know of in all of Pima County for, since August?
Correct. So, um, anytime there's a positive case of student or staff, even if they're in remote instruction, our schools report that back to us at the county. So that total number, the 3,700, is for every single school site, every single student, staff, uh, faculty, custodial staff, food worker staff, no matter who it is. We, we aim to get those reports because we really want to keep an eye on that data. Um, the main reason why is, is monitoring for outbreaks. And the outbreaks are those 59 that again, across every single one of those schools, across every single district. Uh, those are the points for us to make sure to have conversations with, uh, those school sites afterwards to see if there's mitigation guidance that needs to be offered, or just to, it serves as a really great touch point with public health.
Brian, when you were looking at those 59 outbreaks, what were the most, except for the sports issues, what were the most common, like, in-school issues that came across that we want to be aware of?
Yeah, faculty lunches were another one. Um, exceptional education classrooms are another one of those. Uh, it's really difficult to implement mitigation, and, um, we're continuing at, looking at trying to figure out the best way to do that. Um, potting and cohorting seem to be the only viable solutions for those populations at this point in time. Uh, but those, those are, uh, the common thread with every single one of those outbreaks is that there wasn't some mitigation that was followed. Whether masks were not being worn, or they were being worn incorrectly, or someone was giving someone else a hug, or they shared an eating or drinking utensil, it was just not following the mitigation guidance.
Thank you for asking that question, Dr. Ravi, because, uh, I wouldn't have even known, but I assumed it was, uh, the 3,000 of an outbreak at the schools, but only 59 for all of Southern Arizona.
For Pima County specifically. Correct.
All right. Um, Ms. Shaw.
Thank you, Ms. Counts. Hello, Mr. Eller. Um, I'm looking here at an infograph from the, um, Arizona Department of Health Services about, uh, safely returning to in-person instruction, and they have, um, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the one I'm looking at, um, but they have like a kind of checklist to see if it would be safe to, um, go back. And so I'm just going to ask you the questions here. Um, so is there a two-week decline in the number of cases?
Uh, there has been a consistent decline in the number of cases for the past seven weeks. Um, we're not below what we would, uh, what we would, um, put into the, uh, the moderate transmission category, which is 100 per 100,000. So out of 100,000 people randomly sampled in Pima County, is it less than 100 that would be infected with COVID at that point in time?
Okay. And you know what? Can you go back to that graph that has like the timeline of cases?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, let me pull it up. This one?
Yes. Okay. So I assume we're all the way on the right now?
Yeah. I'm going to actually give you a, a quick resource that is super helpful and with, uh, with Pima County data. Um, let me grab it really quick. It's a, there's, there's an RGIS, uh, data map that we have that's available for the public to use where you can see breakdowns of each of these informational points in, in a really robust and easy to use format. So, uh, again, this is, this is publicly available. Uh, and it's gonna, it's gonna give you all of those graphs that you saw, plus a bunch more information. Um, and there's a, there's a couple of quick tabs that I'm going to point out that I think may be useful. On the bottom, you can break this data down by zip code, census tract, jurisdiction or school district. So that's important information to note, though, know that it doesn't mean that it's TUSD students or staff. If you break it down by school district, it just goes by the, the location, um, geographically. But one, I think, Ms., uh, Ms. Shaw, that you'd be interested in is this cumulative cases tab. So if I go down to the bottom and I open this, this, uh, this, uh, dropdown, I can go by cumulative or by date. And then when I click by date, I've got this tracker that goes from March all the way to current date. And then at the top, I can slide this over, and it'll give you me an even more detailed, in-depth overview of where these cases are by day. So I, this, this is a really helpful tool to, to look at where you're at locally with data.
Thank you. Um, yeah, and if you'll just zoom out a bit, all the way if you can. Uh, you know, I just want to point out like where we are now today. I mean, if you go to the other side before the spike happened, you know, the spike occurred because, um, I'm not sure what date that says, but because, you know, we started gathering again. And so just because we have low numbers now, um, you know, I'm still not comfortable with, you know, mass gatherings, and I feel like schools fall under that category or will eventually. Um, and yeah, I just wanted to make that point. Also, you know, I read an article about, um, the possibility of Pima County, um, testing sites being closed due to funding. Is there any, um, is that accurate?
Um, that's, uh, that's going to be a Pima County Board of Supervisors meeting. That's, uh, that's going to be a Pima County Board of Supervisors meeting that you'll have to, uh, turn to information on that. That's something that I can't comment on since I'm not part of the testing team. I, I can only give schools related data at this point in time. I would also anecdotally point out that there have been lots of studies that have been conducted specifically in return-to-school settings, uh, across the nation and in Europe at this point in time too, that show that even during that return-to-school point in time for, for those different communities, that there has been a continual decline in those cases. And I can share some of those studies with you too, if that's, if that's at all pertinent.
Thank you. Ms. Gravava, could you speak to the question?
I actually was just going to, I just didn't want to cut anyone off that had a question. So we do have the item on the agenda for tomorrow and there is a suggestion, um, but it has to be with a vote. And so what the city did is they looked at testing. Testing has reduced, um, significantly, just like the numbers have. Testing has also reduced our utilization of testing. And so what I was going to recommend is look at when the peak hours are for different locations as to testing and continue to have some options. The problem is the state has funding for testing, but is really relied on Pima County to fund itself. And so just because the county stops funding the testing, doesn't mean that testing will be eliminated throughout, um, Pima County, there's other sites that are state-funded. But unfortunately, Maricopa County has a lot more state-funded sites than we do here in Pima County. And I think it's because Pima County's been really, um, determined to open up those sites and get as many going as possible. I do think we'll see a reduction in availability of the county-sponsored sites, just like we have with the city sites, but I don't think there'll be a complete elimination. I think they'll just, we'll have certain hours and not as many hours available. Yeah, but that's at the meeting tomorrow. So I'm happy to send, um, an update to Dr. Trujillo and then he can send it out to everybody.
And Dr. Trujillo, that still does not affect our free testing for all in the TUSD community through ASU, through the saliva tests that we still have available?
That does not. That's a fantastic segue from the board president. We have a unique resource, uh, out there at High Corbett. We want to continue to promote. That testing is available to all, uh, TUSD employees. And I know you've, uh, Ms. Counts, you've been working with, with me on the planning. We've made some key changes. Now you can go to that site as a walk-up. You don't have to get behind a computer. You don't have to register. You can show up the same day and get your test at High Corbett Field. The only caveat to that is if they're not slammed and they can get you in. So you want to guarantee yourself a spot, you sign up. But, uh, from the feedback I've heard from a lot of employees, uh, most days if you go there, they find a way to get you in. So that is a resource that's really unique to TUSD that will continue.
Thank you. Um, and I just want to put a plug out there for our community that, um, uh, Obamacare has been opened up and, um, we've qualified for the Medicaid expansion and that provides free, um, testing at any, uh, well, at a lot, hundreds of, uh, different urgent cares and, and places around town. Private insurance, I think now is covering a lot of the testing at, uh, CBS or Walgreens. Um, so there is a lot, I think, of resources out there. It'd be best if we had what Maricopa has, at least percentage per capita-wise. Um, but we still have, our community still has a lot of options. Um, so I encourage everybody, if you're, if you're not insured, to get on, on there and look at the, the free options that we do have, including the High Corbett, which is wonderful.
And I, um, just to follow up, I will be requesting that the county also consolidate all of those, whether they're county-sponsored or not, onto one page on the county website. So we have access to all of them. They've been working on putting all of those together, including vaccines, because not all of, I mean, there's FEMA one, there's state-sponsored, there's some that are coming through CBS, others through Kroger. So there's not like one organization in Pima County that is coordinating all of those. There's like a lot of people a part of it.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
All right, Dr. Trujillo.
We will close out this discussion with just a quick look at the employee survey on the extent to which our employees have been able to, uh, get partially or fully vaccinated or secure an appointment. This is day one. We had an incredible response rate by noon. Let's take a look and see where we are, uh, at the end of this day. Leslie?
Thank you, Dr. Trujillo. Good evening, governing board members, President Counts. Um, so I'm just going to pull up quickly the survey. Um, this is as of 5:30 tonight. Um, so the survey went out about 8:30 this morning, um, to all of our TUSD staff. Um, and, um, it was reviewed, all the questions were reviewed by principals about a week and a half ago. They provided a little bit of feedback. They made adjustments. So this is the final version. Um, and it will close on Sunday. Um, and then the final results will be presented, um, neck, at next week's board meeting. So the first question is, have you received or are you planning to receive a COVID-19 vaccine? And at this point, we have 81%. Um, over 23, almost 2,400 of our respondents are planning to get a vaccine. Um, the next question, um, have you received the opportunity to register for the vaccine? And 95% of the people said they had. The third question was, have you received your first shot? And so far, almost 82% of our respondents have said they've gotten their first shot. Um, the second one is, have you scheduled your second shot? And 80% have. The fifth question, have you received your second shot? So we'll see, that's lower. So that's at 51, almost 52%. Um, so there are obviously people who have scheduled, who are still waiting to get their, um, appointment or what their appointment is upcoming. And then the last question is if you're having issues getting the vaccine. Um, we had about 9% of our people let us know. Um, and so anyone who provided their name and email address, because there's a comment box available, um, I'll be reaching out to them directly, um, making sure they understand all their options, um, giving them all the options, all the phone numbers. And then, um, Brian with Pima County has also helped us connect some people for appointments. So we'll also be working with their team as to what we can, um, possibly do there. And that's it. It's very quick. Survey takes about less than a minute, depending on how quickly you read. Any questions?
Leslie, can you go to the first slide? Because I thought it said 91% were planning, but I, I thought I heard you say 81.
Oh, sorry. Yes, you're right. It is 91%. I, I misspoke.
Okay. That's wonderful. And I just have to say thank you so much for all the emails that I've been receiving in my TUSD email, so I know it's going out to all staff, that include multiple ways and, uh, for people to register and, um, including those phone numbers. And, um, just today with the email that you sent out just today with all the phone numbers, I was able to find, um, hundreds of available appointments for this week in Pima County and the different sites. So, um, thank you for making it easy and accessible.
Oh, you're welcome. Happy to do that. We want everybody, if they want the vaccine, to get it. So glad that, um, most people are able to get one relatively quickly. Any other questions?
I can't see everybody, so just go ahead and chime in with your question. If you have any.
Ms. Counts?
Yes.
Okay, I do have some questions. Are we done with the presentation, Dr. Trujillo?
That's it. Yeah.
Okay, so I had some questions that I jotted down from the presentation. So we might go back a little bit, but, um, you know, when, one of the first slides is that consensus caps are still part of the negotiation process, that we're still going through that process. And I think that reopening schools without a definitive number coming to the board is problematic. And so we can't have normal consensus caps in person.
Agreed.
Yeah, so I'm glad that we're both on the same page on that, because I do feel that that's very critical. The other thing is, is I, as much as possible, I know that we're giving a lot of individual, um, individual options and allowing schools to make their own plans, because, you know, every school community is very different. I do think that it's important for us to look at the size of the classrooms, because some of our older schools have significantly smaller classrooms than, let's say, a school like McCorkle. And so balancing those two things, that there may be more room, um, in one, on one campus. I mean, maybe, you know, 16 students can easily fit and still have six feet of space around them, but in other schools they can't. And I, I do want to note that, um, when Mr. Eller was talking about the spread on campuses, that a lot of that, you know, he attributed some of it to, um, teachers getting together and having lunch together. And so I hope as part of the continued support that teachers and staff need to remind them that, you know, getting together in the lunchroom and having lunch together unfortunately is not an option and that, you know, you'll be eating in your classrooms. And I mean, it, it will not feel very collegial, but, you know, having professional development on Zoom and that we're not having meetings in person. And even though we can still go back on campus, that IEP meetings and all of those should still be on Zoom, even if two or three of the people that need to be there are in the same building, that we don't, we're trying to discourage them from getting together. I think that's going to be really critical and one of the things that, um, could really hurt reopening in general. And then, um, as far as when, maybe at our next meeting, if you can talk to us after the agreement's been made with how we're going to deal with class size overages. For example, if you have, the class capacity is only 14 in person. I'm glad that you highlighted the fact that prioritizing our most vulnerable children and those that are really need the extra supports, I think that makes a lot of sense. You know, ELL, foster care, um, McKinney-Vento, children with disabilities, all of those students. And then for the rest, that it's not like a first come, first served kind of thing, that you've indicated you prefer in-person, but that we have to go through a process on campus. And I think it's really important that parents understand that. Um, the other is, I know we talked about it before and I've talked to a couple of people since, but some classrooms only have four children that want to return in person. And I think that that, um, giving the option to those teachers and schools of saying, you know, we can't really run an effective classroom with, that's interactive and what everybody wants their children to have with four students. And so making sure that those children have other options, I think is going to be really important. And I know that you mentioned this on, because there was a question about it at, on one of the Facebook Lives. But if you can come back with, to us about how we're going to deal with extracurricular and specials, like music, arts, PE, are students going to be dressing out or not? Because if they can't go and dress out, then how, how are they going to be able to participate in PE band? If the school only has one set of instruments, you can't share those. There's not enough time to sanitize those. And the same with the arts, you know, um, are we going to be sharing all of the same, you know, brushes? And all of those things, I think, are things that are going to be really important to talk about. And I'm glad to see that 59 cases in TUSD, um, that it was, it was low. But I also think that if, if you're not on a, I, I don't know that everyone was asked and you have to voluntarily give that information, that you work at a school and where you work. So I just want to, you know, I, not that I don't trust Pima County Health Department's numbers, but I do think that it's important to understand the impact of some of those 59 cases. That one person coming, you know, getting COVID on a campus and going home to their entire family and the entire family getting COVID, those numbers are not attributed to TUSD because we're only dealing with the employee. But the other four or five people in the household or whoever else they had contact with, I mean, that's as a result of the contact that they received wherever they got it. Um, so I do think it's important to sort of think about that. And the variants, um, are scary. And I know a lot of people are very fearful of them because they're even more contagious than what we've, um, seen up to date. So I, I just wanted to say some of those concerns that I have, that I hope are addressed at our next meeting. Because, um, you know, I know that many, it's about a 50/50 that want to go back on campus, but I do think every community is unique. And I'm glad to hear that you mentioned that every school is going to have the individual option to be able to figure this out.
Yep.
Because it shouldn't be a one-size-fits-all for everybody, because our camp, our communities, our school communities are not like that. Thank you.
No, thank you. Yeah, and, uh, I, I think the biggest point that you made, that I spoke to earlier, we're going to be making class size recommendations and those are going to be finalized this week. So you'll know walking into March, I, what they are. But the key word is recommendations, because you said it. A building principal has to be able to say, okay, if this class size recommendation is 15, I'm using my multipurpose room here. I can get more than 15 kids in here doing six to seven feet of physical distance. I should be able to. Or it's the other way. This, this particular classroom has part, has historically been used for X Ed or ELD. I can't get 14 kids in here. I can only get eight. So we have to make sure that these are recommendations, but it's actually going to be according to space available. And one thing that we do have, and I want to thank Planning Services, uh, Mr. Sean Brown and Bryant. A few years ago, we actually did a very extensive campus-by-campus audit that actually measured out every single classroom that principals are going to be able to have as a directory for their campuses to be able to get to that number fairly quickly. So I think that that's hugely important. Uh, we're going to return next week with the arts and PE to kind of give you an update on what that's going to look like. And it is very, very crucial that sites have the autonomy and the flexibility they need to respond to localized conditions. We cannot overarch here. Principals need our support on the big stuff, right? Criteria for how to handle overages, yes, we'll handle that. Criteria to look at when selecting a remote learning assignment, we'll handle that. But in terms of like local conditions and addressing the needs of our individual employees, we want our principals to be able to do that, or individual grade levels and what individual grade levels may want to do. So you're absolutely right. And next week, we're looking forward to discussing more about the arts and those, uh, perform, those physical education classes.
And I do want to thank you for doing the two forums online. I know that they answered a lot of the questions that I had. And so if people haven't had the opportunity, they're still going to be available, right? Do we have them on, like a link on a website or on their TUSD's Facebook page? How can people listen to those?
Yes, they're still, um, they're fully, they're going to be posted. They're going to be, um, they're, they were fully recorded. Uh, they're going to be on our TUSD Next Steps 2020, where you can see all the forums, uh, that you want. I will be doing another forum for counselors later this week. And we're going to set up, uh, at least two additional forums next week for parents in English and Spanish, and then potentially one for students.
Okay, and one other question regarding remote staff. Are, is the only, um, is the only staff member that would be considered for remote, a teacher? Like not TAs? I'm asking because if some schools have students that are all remote, I guess we still have learning labs. I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, I'm not sure I understand that question, so.
Are the only employees that are being considered for the option of remote? If the site, if it coordinates with the site, are those teachers, classroom teachers? Is everyone else to be on campus?
We have a designated remote teaching protocol for remote teaching assignments. Whether or not another campus employee works from home, has the ability to work from home, has a need to work from home, that's an individual campus administration. Our principals have that flexibility to be able to determine what those needs are and what works for their campuses. What we are asking for is with remote teaching assignments, that when we're talking about teachers applying for those, teaching remotely 100%, that they follow the protocol that we saw tonight.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, it's 7:10 and I just want, um, I know we have another agenda item. I have a hard stop at 7:30. Um, so unless there is any pressing questions, I'd like to move on to the next agenda item. All right, Dr. Trujillo.
Next agenda item, I will turn it over to our board, our board clerk, uh, Shaw, uh, with a motion for the board to discuss the possibility of delaying the start of school and assigning remote instruction indefinitely for the remainder of the year. Board Clerk Shaw.
Thank you, Dr. Trujillo. As you all know, I have been, uh, rather hesitant to, uh, send us all back to in-person learning. I think that many, uh, teachers and staff Um, I think that many, uh, teachers and staff echo my concerns. Um, as you heard at the last board meeting, the majority of the call to the audience letters, um, were about the concerns of staff, um, returning to school and also the logistical issues that are going to come up, um, when, you know, students are, might lose their, um, their teachers. Um, and, and the trauma and the, you know, backtracking that will happen, um, if that does occur, and we know it will, um, in some cases in schools. Um, and so I did want us to talk about, um, the possibility of pushing back the opening date. Um, I think there are a lot of reasons for why we should do that. Um, one of the most important ones, I think, is that, you know, the longer that we wait, the lower the cases will be. Since we're the largest school district in Tucson, you know, we have a great impact on our community. And so, you know, 40,000 plus students we have, that really translates to more than 100,000 people when you consider their family, um, members and, and plus the staff and their family members. And so, um, you know, as Mr. Eller pointed out in the graph, you know, the numbers can go up and down. And so, you know, if we were to open up as a larger school district, whether it's, you know, of 50% or 40% who will be going back to in-person, um, you know, you can pretty much, um, you know, uh, divine that, uh, the cases will rise. And, um, as, uh, Mr. Eller also said, you know, the 645 total number of cases in TUSD, whether they were remote or in-person, you know, once we go back, those will, those will rise exponentially because more students in a school, um, you're going to see more cases, whether they, um, you know, you get, you get, um, you get the virus in school or not, there's always a possibility that you're going to pass it off to someone else in the school if, when you don't catch it, um, immediately. Um, I also want to bring up, um, the question of our infrastructure. Do we have the Wi-Fi capacity in our schools to, uh, really handle all of the students and staff who will be using, um, Wi-Fi? Uh, I see my daughter in her class and sometimes I see, you know, the students who are in the, um, in-person learning sites. And often, you know, their Wi-Fi connectivity is rather low and it's intermittent. And so, um, having everybody go back to school or even a, a smaller portion go back to school, I wonder if, you know, we really have the infrastructure to, to support that, especially with hybrid learning and teachers, um, you know, doing, uh, remote learning for the second half of the day in school. Um, I want to, of course, echo Ms. Grijalva's points that she just made. There's a lot that is still unknown, um, a lot that we didn't see in this, um, the last, um, presentation in regards to, um, you know, the elective classes, art, music, how are we going to share all those materials? It's, it's still not mapped out. And I think that is, you know, questionable and, um, something that probably shouldn't have been done already. Um, and, you know, to Dr. Trillo's point about how we're not going to micromanage the school sites, you know, I know that each school is different, but I think that we should still have a standard protocol, whether it's in a small scale or the large scale, um, that people need to be strict to. And so I'm happy that we already have the, um, the classrooms mapped out on their sizes so that principals can, um, have an easier job at, you know, determining the class sizes. But I still think that there should be an overall consensus cap that is, um, very low so that we can, you know, have really safe mitigation strategies. Um, also, as Dr. Ravi pointed out, and I pointed out at other, um, other board meetings, the question of what are we going to do at lunch? Okay. Um, as Mr. Eller said, a large, uh, portion of the, the cases that were transmitted in schools did happen, um, during lunchtime with staff. And so, you know, when students go back into school, the only time that they'll be taking off their mask is at lunch. And so we won, I wonder why, um, why we're even going to be allowing, uh, students to eat lunch inside the cafeterias, period. Um, also I've heard reports about playgrounds opening up in some cases. Um, some cases I see, like I just looked at Lawrence's reopening plan, they said that, um, their playground will be closed. But, um, you know, there is, there's a lot of wishy-washiness going on about our, uh, safety protocols and our mitigation strategies. And I think it's important that they be standardized, uh, before we, um, decide to reopen. Um, and also of course, you know, as humans, we're hard to control and, um, you know, there are always going to be moments where we do not follow the protocol. Um, and this is the case, especially in the younger classes, um, in X Ed classes, um, and so on. And so I, you know, I really feel like if we can push back the opening until a higher percentage of the staff and possibly students are vaccinated and, you know, the cases of Pima County in general will continue to plummet for a longer period of time, um, it will be better for TUSD and the greater Tucson community. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
Um, Ms. Counts?
Yes, it's great.
I do, I, I'm looking forward to getting more information about the questions that I still have. Um, some of the questions were answered and I do think that for the staff that I've spoken to that have been going on campus regularly, um, there seems to be a lot less stress about returning to campus because they've been there from the beginning, but they still share the same concerns about adding more children on campus. So, um, I think that I would, I look forward to getting the information from Dr. Trillo and, um, may ask for an item on the agenda, depending on the answer, may ask for an item on the agenda, an upcoming agenda.
I'd like to, uh, echo Ms. Grijalva's anticipation of hearing some more information on, uh, specific items. Specifically, I would like to find out about lunch. Um, I really think it would be best if, weather permitting, I mean, I think anything besides a heavy downpour, um, kids should be eating outside. Uh, we have great weather, um, kids can have, you know, we can do fun picnics outside. Um, and because, because it is transferred just through the air and they're saying, you know, it's really not about surfaces, um, and there's, it's very rare that people catch COVID through surfaces. So I don't want to waste money on, um, hygiene theater, but really looking forward to, um, hearing about how we can, um, in addition to the HVAC systems and upgrade, which I'm and really in support of, um, I would like to know more about lunches and outside, outdoor time for kids, including windows. I'd like to see a little bit more flexibility, at least while the weather is nice, um, that schools can open windows. If windows, um, are sealed shut, if we can, um, open those for teachers that are requesting them, uh, to be opened. Um, and again, it all goes back to, um, transmission through air particles and not, uh, surfaces, which leads me to my last item that I'd like to hear about, which is, uh, I would like playgrounds to be open. I think play is, especially for our younger students, is such an integral part of their development. Um, if they are wearing masks and able to run and play and do all the things that they have not been able to do for an entire year, um, I think that's going to go a long way in their, uh, emotional and social development and a lot of what they've been, um, meeting and, and lacking in this past year. Um, so I would like to see that our playgrounds are open, um, and, uh, lunches outside and flexibility with, uh, opened windows. Any other board members have comments?
I have a comment.
Yes, Ms. Minne.
Um, so I, I think, you know, um, not necessarily hard class caps, but I think any sort of caps would go a long way in helping teachers and parents feel safe. Um, so I definitely like to look into that more. Um, and I have, in a few of the schools that I have toured recently have showed me their mitigation, uh, uh, rules and the things that they do and, and the spacing out in the cafeteria, which I know still isn't ideal, but our kiddos need to eat. Um, so if we can somehow devise a way, maybe, you know, I know Dr. Trillo had just put something up about, uh, lunch, um, especially for our younger ones, because yes, we do have really nice weather, but as we all know, come May, it becomes really hot.
Yeah.
Um, and so I don't want any of our kiddos to be getting sick on the playground because they're eating and then they're running around and then there's barf all over the playground. So, you know, I, I, there's just so many variables and Adelika's laughing, but, but that is, and you can see that happening, you know, because kids are going to be kids. And so how do, you know, um, I know, Dr. Trillo, I do believe you were trying to pull up something, so I don't know if that's something you wanted to go over.
Yeah, you know, we can do this. Um, uh, we spent several hours in public presentations going over lunches and recess and making every school put together a reentry plan. We can, I'll put something together next week, again, just to kind of remind the community. But I'll say again, um, you're ready, I mean, you can go right into your local school and see exactly how elementary schools are dealing with lunch. And the bulk of them are just doing one classroom at a time and spreading them out and making sure that they have appropriate supervision and sanitation protocol. We're looking at banks right now. Uh, it's not too different from some of the other schools and what they're doing. I can tell you that our high schools that are larger are utilizing outdoor a lot more. Um, I had an opportunity to look at Sunnyside's model and that kind of looks a lot like what, um, what our high schools are doing in terms of utilizing outdoor picnic table spaces. So you can see really what your local school is doing at all aspects of the day, um, how we're utilizing outdoors, how we're, how we're handling transition times, how we're handling arrivals, departures. Uh, so we, we mapped this out from the beginning. Uh, it's still up there and available for the public to view, but we'll certainly, uh, put something together and make sure that next week we revisit some of that stuff. It has been a while. Uh, none of that stuff has changed. It's been a while since we presented these plans. I think it was like September and October when we thought we were going to be opening in November. So we didn't. So it's been a while, so we want to come back and reassure the community that these have already been mapped out, these plans.
Ms. Counts?
Yes.
And also we have three new board members that haven't heard that presentation unless they were glued to their computer screens while they were running for office. So, you know, they haven't had an opportunity to ask some of these questions and I think that that is really important. And so perhaps sending the link to all of us to remind us where we can find the information. And so, you know, we, you can answer some pretty specific questions about those things, I think, um, it's really critical.
I, I will just say that this item, uh, is a study item. The administration, we just need some very clear direction. If you're, if you're not comfortable opening or proceeding with planning to open on March 22nd, we would definitely like, um, to get a gauge on the direction. Because there's, there's a significant amount of resources and planning and communication going on right now that we're about 10 days out because we lose five days for the spring break. Um, I have 110% confidence in our team. Uh, they have my full confidence, what we saw tonight, we are ready to go. But, um, ultimately, we want to respond to any direction given to us, uh, by the governing board.
Dr. Trillo, I'm very impressed with, as I said earlier, TUSD going above and beyond what I've seen any other district, uh, doing is from N95 masks to upgrading our HVAC to just multiple, multiple mitigation strategies. Um, so I am comfortable with your plan. But I, I do want to hear a little bit more about the windows.
Absolutely. We'll, we'll get back on that next week, prioritize windows.
Uh, Dr. Ravi.
So a couple of things I just want to say. Um, I, I was able to look through, um, my daughter's school's Line Weaver's plan, uh, after you mentioned it, Dr. Trillo, and I was able to see their lunch plan and other things and, and it was all laid out really well. And so I encourage people to take a look at their school's website and, uh, look at their reentry plan. Um, you know, I think, I think a lot of things are not ideal. This is, we're in the middle of a pandemic and, you know, we have not had ideal learning for, for a year now. It'll be a year, a spring break in two weeks, that we left for spring break and never came back. You know, I hear the concerns of parents and teachers around their district about losing their students and changing students and changing teachers. Um, and that relationship is so important and I understand that. You know, I'm, I'm married to an educator. My husband taught elementary school for most of his career. There was, uh, uh, years where he switched from third grade to fourth grade and leveled up with his students. So he had two years with his students and the relationships he was able to build over two years was even stronger going into that second year. And I, and I saw that and how important those relationships are. And it sickens me to think that we're going to have to change, you know, teachers potentially again. This is going to be, you know, up until our fourth teacher of the, of the school year because of all the DIT and then transfers at Guam for espousal reasons and other reasons why we changed our, on our third teacher and to lose a teacher again. It's just, it's just really not a good situation for, for us and our family, but, you know, nothing is ideal this year. Nothing has been ideal. This is a pandemic year and, you know, we can't make everyone, you know, happy and our goal is to do the best we can for our students. And, you know, my, my father is in his seventies. He lives with us and he hasn't gotten his first vaccine yet. He's scheduled later on this month. And because he hasn't gotten his vaccine, because teachers were put to the front of the line, not so we can open schools in August, but so we can open schools this spring and get our kids back. And that's why teachers were put in the front of the line for the vaccines. And that's why my father hasn't gotten his vaccine yet. And, you know, I've looked at the mitigation strategies, I've talked to my school's principal, I've talked to a number of people, I've looked at the public health data. We are sending our daughter back. I feel very comfortable that she'll be in a safe environment, uh, in in-person, uh, learning. And, uh, I'm very comfortable with the mitigation strategies and I think it's going to be safe. And I'm looking forward to her getting, um, a, a, a better quality education and she's able to receive remotely because she's a kind of person that runs, learns remotely well. And so, um, I, I definitely do not support, um, us waiting any further than we are to open up our schools.
Yes, Ms. Shaw.
Thank you. Um, I think a good litmus test is the boards, uh, how comfortable we are or some of us are in even going back to in-person board meetings and having the audience in the room. If, if we cannot, or are not comfortable having the audience in the room with us and in-person board meetings, then how can we expect the entire district to go back? I wasn't one of the people who voted, um, against in-person board meetings, but, um, some of the people who, you know, are, are comfortable with sending, uh, students and staff back, um, voted against it. And so, um, you know, I just want us to keep that in mind, that we have to really practice what we preach. Um, and finally, I will say that, you know, when the experts are wrong about things, there are catastrophic, uh, results from it. And so I think we have to be very cautious in how we are proceeding. We only have eight weeks left of school roughly and, you know, whether teachers are vaccinated or not, there's going to be trauma created from a schedule change, a teacher change. And I think because we do not have everything fine tuned yet in regards to our mitigation strategies and our infrastructure, it would bode well to just wait till the next school year so we can get everything worked out.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Um, I appreciate your courage to, um, speak your mind and state your case and I have a lot of respect for you in that regard and lots of regards, but. and lots of regards, but courage. It's not easy. And like Dr. Ravi said, none of this is easy and none of it is ideal. It's hard.
Ms. Counts?
Yes, Ms. Grijalva.
I have heard, I, I want to say that I share a lot of, I, I can argue both sides, I think, pretty effectively on whether to return in person or to stay remote. I've talked to many teachers who are very concerned for their children who are struggling, their students who are struggling at, with this online model, that it's not a model that works for every child, and, um, that they're concerned for a number of reasons. One of the reasons why I'm willing to continue to explore going to in-person learning is because I do think we're going to be in a very similar position at the beginning of next school year. And, um, for the reasons that I've stated before, and for, um, the need that I have to get those questions answered from Dr. Trujillo, I do think it's important for everyone to give an idea to Dr. Trujillo so he knows whether there's a majority to move forward or not, because there is a lot of planning to do. But, um, I do need those questions answered for me to feel comfortable to, um, to continue with giving the remote option. I also think it's, it, for me, was very critical to give individual schools the option of staying fully remote if their numbers are so small for the in-person request. I think that should be a consideration. And that we know that there will be some cap sizes, strong cap sizes, to keep people distant. That's going to be really critical. Ms. Counts?
Yes, Ms. Luna Rose.
Thank you. Um, same with Ms. Grijalva. I could argue both sides. I have talked to a lot of teachers and staff and parents since our last meeting. I do believe, uh, a couple of weeks ago when we first broached this issue. And while my view hasn't, hasn't totally changed, I can see where, um, the same issues that Ms. Grijalva was talking about, the answers that I would like to see, um, the questions I would like to see answered. Also, you know, like the caps in the classroom, how much PPE? You know, what, I understand, you know, we just did this whole presentation of mitigation measures, but, you know, how is, how is that going to be, um, really implemented? And also the surveys that come back. And then also with our teachers, you know, if, you know, I've had some teachers talk to me about, perhaps, especially at the high school and middle school level, of needing the freedom to block schedule instead of using, uh, the daily 60-minute classes twice a day. And I don't want to exhaust them because a lot of them are going to be doing, doing double duty, and I want to keep that in mind as we're making these decisions. And I, we all have a vested interest, and that's why we're here. But overall, I, I feel like in-person learning, it really isn't going to change by the time we come August 1st. We're still going to be in a lot of the same situation because COVID keeps going up and down, and people are people. And so, I just don't want to keep kicking that can down the road and kicking it down the road. Um, and, and frankly, not only losing students and families to other places, but also the kiddos that we don't know where they are right now and what's happening to them. And I, I do worry about those, those kids. I can speak to my nephew's class where he's in first grade at Bonias, and some of the students just don't show up, where they have their cameras off, and, you know, because their parents have to work. And so some of those students have shown up back on campus because they need, they need supervision. And so I worry about those kiddos, and we have, we actually do have quite a bit of them. So, I think that's a lot to consider, but I, I think we just need good measures in order to feel safe to open come after spring break.
Dr. Trujillo, do you, uh, feel clear?
Yeah, yeah, I just want to thank everybody, um, for your candor. Thank you for the feedback. You know, kind of just hearing the temperature. We're going to proceed with planning. Uh, I hear very clearly, we're going to return on March 9th. We're going to talk about the arts. We're going to talk about physical education. Uh, we'll talk a little bit more about, we're going to walk in and have, uh, class cap recommendations, uh, ready to go. I've heard that, you know, loudly and clearly, uh, to make sure that everybody feels comfortable, uh, potentially moving forward for, uh, the March, the week of March 22nd. Uh, I will definitely get the information to the board beforehand this week, but still have the discussion publicly, uh, at the March 9th meeting to make sure that our wider community knows uh, specifically what the plans are for the arts, uh, and our physical education classes.
Okay. All right. Do we have future agenda? Is that on tonight? I have to pull up board docs here. Uh, yes, future meeting dates and agenda items.
So, um, future agenda items, March 9th. Uh, we've got the return of employee benefits. Uh, and this time is action. The board had it as a study item. We made revisions according to board feedback. That was, that's on the docket for next week. Uh, we will be returning next week, or a review of mitigation strategies for the arts and physical education classes, recommendations for class caps. Uh, that's going to be on the docket also for next week. Uh, a key agenda item also next week is approval of E-rate. We see a substantial amount of federal dollars coming in for technology through the E-rate program. Those are going to be three, uh, fairly large items that, um, we'll, we'll have ready to go next week.
Okay. Well, thank you, everybody, uh, for coming tonight, and, uh, we had a lot of healthy discussion, and, um, I just appreciate all of the administration's work, every, uh, every staff member at TUSD, and um, all the hard work everybody's put in, and, um, staff and families as well. So, um, we'll see everybody March 9th.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, be safe. Thanks.